Call to order the meeting of the February 21st, 2018 Frederick County Planning Commission. If you would, join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. First on our agenda is the adoption of our agenda. Have a motion.
Say it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next one is a motion approval of the January 17th, 2018 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
The vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
This time we have our committee reports. Our first report is our Ag District, Mr. Klein.
Frederick County Ag District Advisory Committee met on January 23rd to consider a loan parcel to ground to put in the South Frederick Agricultural Forestry District. The discussion was unanimous for all to be entered into the forest district.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Our next committee report is Frederick Water from Mr. Oats.
Mr. Chairman, my report will be a synopsis. On February 14th, 2018, the court struck two of the town's three experts on part of the testimony and, excuse me, and part of the proposed testimony, the third expert. The court dismissed the portion of the town's complaint regarding alleged billing errors. On February 15th, Frederick County Sanitation Authority filed counterclaims against the town of Stephen City. The suit alleges that as of February 9th, 2018, the town owed Frederick Water over 5.7 million in unpaid invoices and penalties for water and wastewater services provided after the town quit paying in March of 2015. The suit alleges that records produced by the town appear to indicate that it does not have the cash reserves or the cash flow from operations that would enable the town to pay the outstanding balance, as alleged. The suit contains seven counts, most notably the demand for the 5.7 million allegedly owed, a request to the court to suspend water service to the town, requiring them to buy water from another provider, the motion for the appointment of a special receiver to take charge of certain town accounts, and a request to declare the town's water protection ordinance unconstitutional as applied to the Bartonville well. And our next board meeting is February 27th.
Thank you, sir. Next committee report is our Winchester Planning Commission Liaison, Ms. Wolf.
Thank you. Since your last meeting, we had our official planning commission meeting yesterday, February 20th. We forwarded to city council with requests for approval the two extended stay units on Cameron Street. Additionally, we approved a site plan for a driveway on Linden Drive. And additionally, we initiated a text amendment regarding short-term rentals. So we will keep hearing that for the next month.
Thank you. Welcome. And our last report is from Ms. Trout from the Board Supervisors Liaison.
I have no report this time.
Thank you. Welcome also. This is the portion of our meeting for citizen comments. This portion is any citizen that would like to speak before us on any item that's not on our agenda or part of the public hearing. So I have, so the floor is yours if you have a comment. Seeing no one, I'll close the citizen comment portion and move on to the next item. Our agenda was is our first public hearing item. It's a rezoning number 05-17 for Owen and Minerals. Kimstone doing business adds Carmuse Lime and Stone submitted by Lawson and Solak PLC to amend the proffers for this property. Rezoning 394.2 acres from the EM Extractive Manufacturing District with proffers to the EM Extractive Manufacturing District with revised proffers. The properties are situated generally west of the town of Middletown. Specifically, the Middle Marsh property is located east of Bellevue Lane, Route 758, and west and adjacent to Heights Road, Route 625, and is further traversed by Chapel Road, Route 627. The Northern Reserve is bounded to the south by Cedar Creek and is west and adjacent to Meadow Mills Road, Route 624. The properties are identified with property identification numbers 83-A-109 and 90-A-23 in the Back Creek Magisterial District. Ms. Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. As you stated, this is a request to modify proffers from rezoning 3 of 2006, which was approved back in 2008. You may recall at your November 15th meeting, this item was postponed for 90 days to provide the applicant additional time to work with the neighbors. Now, what this rezoning seeks to do is to amend proffers pertaining to the view shed plans, berm heights and installation timing, landscaping, and cemetery access. I'm really just going to go over the points of the most recent proffer statement in your agenda dated February 14th. So what this seeks to amend is first, the approved proffers back from 2006, approved in 2008, required berms that ranged in height from 10 feet to 30 feet based on 12 proffered view shed plans. Now, these revisions include three view shed plats instead of the 12 that show only the, that show proposed berm details north of Chapel Road. Now, with the berm heights that they're proposing, berm D, which is the area north of Chapel Road, now this is the berm that is adjacent to the Western View subdivision. That berm was proffered originally to be 30 feet in height. The revision before you takes that berm down to 15 feet. Now, berm C and D, this is the area along Chapel Road, this removes the berm detail for the area south of Chapel Road, but the section of the berm on the northern side of Chapel Road remains 10 feet. Now, for the berm timing, berms C and D were proffered to be installed no later than 10 years prior to the commencement of mining north of Chapel Road. This revision proposes to install the berms after the permitting process of the properties for mining and before any extraction of materials for processing. Just for clarification sakes, which berms we have? This is the main one we're talking about here is berm D, which is the berms north of Chapel Road. And this is part of the GDP from the applicant's proffer statement. Again, you have section, that didn't work for me, sorry. Section 1, which is shown in one of the view shed plats, that's the area adjacent to the Western View subdivision. That's the berm that's intended to go from 30 feet to 10 feet. Now, you have section 2, which is a 30-foot berm, that's consistent with the original rezoning. Section 4 is also consistent. And then you have section 3, which is a 10-foot berm, which is also consistent. However, the opposite side of Chapel Road no longer has a berm detail. Now, a note that proffer 2.2, that's included in the revised proffers. Now, back in November, when you saw the amended proffers, it stated, "A combination of landscaping, earthen berms, and fencing shall be installed." Now, the amendment before you now states that earthen berms or fencing shall be installed. Staff would note this language is a little vague, and it appears to allow for the complete elimination of any berms. Now, with the cemetery access proposal, it seeks to relocate the Marshbrook Lane access to Chapel Road. Now, the approved proffers from 2006, 2008 stated that the applicant would improve the right-of-way so it could be used for access. The proposed proffer now states that the owner would relocate the right-of-way. And again, this proffer is vague as to whether the applicant will be building a right-of-way as originally proffered or just relocating the actual easement. And it also removes the timeline, which was originally 12 months from the cemetery restoration, and there's no trigger for the completion of this. Now, just for a point of clarification, in the approved proffers, also in the current proffers, for the site access, staff will note that the approved proffers state that access via a public secondary road shall be limited to the quarry access point on McKuen Road. That's the existing quarry access. Now, staff has received a number of questions regarding the site access and them accessing directly onto Chapel Road. I would note that proffer 2.1 prohibits access to Chapel Road for quarry operations, and the proffer GDP also shows the proposed tunnel that would go underneath Chapel. So with that, staff would note that it appears the proposed revision would have a great impact on adjoining residential properties. And we feel that the applicant has not provided justification for the berm revisions and the changes and how it would mitigate the impacts. So tonight, we are seeking a recommendation from the planning commission to forward to the board. I would be glad to answer any questions, and Mr. Ty Lawson is here on behalf of the application.
Any questions, Mr. Thomas?
Ms. Perkins, would you give us an idea of the range of options we have tonight? Of course, we could approve it, we can recommend disapproval of it. What other options are available to us?
Those are the only two options, is to forward a recommendation to the Board of Approval denial due to the fact it was postponed for 90 days. The planning commission needs to forward a recommendation to the board within 90 days.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Perkins? Thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, Ty Lawson. We're here to give you a report of what we've done subsequent to our, to our prior meeting and several folks from Carmuse here, but Mr. Michael Wilmouth is going to lead you through this presentation.
Good evening. My name is Michael Wilmouth. I work for Carmuse Lime and Stone. As Candace alluded to, the last time we were here, the vote was to table the proffer amendment for a period of 90 days to allow for additional communication between our, between Carmuse and the surrounding community. I'm pleased to report tonight that we've had numerous emails, phone calls, six face-to-face meetings, including two full community meetings, where there's open dialogue between members of Carmuse, myself, and the, and the surrounding community members. What you have before you tonight is a, is a document that came from those meetings. It was prepared from recommendations that we received from the, from the community. And I'd like to take the opportunity to walk through a presentation tonight, a brief presentation that hits the highlights of what the proffer amendment covers, and then answer any questions you may have. I'll just swipe. All right. So the original GDP, this is the berm as it's drawn in the approved proffers. As you can see, Chapel Road is bounding to the south. The berm height at the southern portion is 10 feet, gradually growing to a height of approximately 30 feet at a distance of about 100 feet off of the property line for the, for the southern neighbors of a Western View community. What we are proposing is a, is this is the modification, is moving the berm behind an existing row of vegetation and existing tree line and an existing fence line. And then also tucking the berm in inbound of the Middle Marsh Brook, which would eliminate the impact on the stream to the eastern border. This slide simply shows a comparison between the two. It's an overlay. Something to note with the berm behind the existing tree line, it was a recommendation from our community that we proffer to have that tree line remain intact, which was added under section 12.2, that that tree line would remain intact as well as that fence line. As a note, the existing berm is approximately 100 feet off that property line. The new berm location would be approximately 800 feet away from the, from the property line. Just another view, as if you were in an airplane flying over top of Chapel Road, it's just another, like I said, another view shed of the original GDP. And then the proposed change. Again, this tree line here is approximately, the trees are approximately 30 feet tall, so that berm would be behind those trees and that would be proffered to stay. Those trees would not be eliminated. This is a comparison, again, of both of them overlaid with each other. We also included three sight lines, which we'll walk through in just a second, from three different neighbors within the Western View community. Neighbor View 1 is on the south side of Western View. This is the view as if you were to go out and stand in that gentleman's backyard today. We took the opportunity to overlay what a 30-foot berm would look like 100 feet off of his property line. The property line is this kind of row of vegetation right here, so that berm is imposed, it's scaled to be 30 feet tall, 100 feet away. And then similarly, if we were to move that 30-foot berm behind that existing tree line, this would be his view shed today. Neighbor 2 is looking towards the southeast. This would be his view as it stands now. And then superimposing a 30-foot berm, this is what he would be looking at if we were to build the proper, or the berms as they're proffered today. And then if we were to move the berms behind that existing tree line, the berms themselves, even at 30 feet high, would go away. You wouldn't be able to see them. They would be completely hidden. Neighbor 3 View is on the northern side of Western View. This is on an elevated, elevated home site, so we're looking down, looking south, and again, superimposing a 30-foot berm, which is the maximum height as it stands today. And then what it would look like if we were to move it behind the trees. And again, the ones behind the trees would be at 30 feet tall, because that's the maximum that we, that we had the language in. This is just the GDP. I know there's been some confusion. The most recent date would be February the 14th. That's the, the most recent GDP. And then a blow-up of it, which, this shows the, the berm D to the northern section or the northern, northern extents. These heights were given to us at a community meeting last week. These were the recommendations that came from our community when we asked for their feedback. One to note, section, I believe at section 4, it has a minimum of 20 right now. We got some conflicting feedback depending upon which neighbor that we talked to, and so we put it in. The consensus was that a minimum of 20 would be ideal, so that's what we had put in there, but it could go up to 30. And one thing to note, the berm C that's on the southern portion, the berm detail, it's not included in this because right now it's, it's not proffered to change. Berm C will stay exactly the way it is written in the existing proffers. And then lastly, this is just a summary of the community contact that we've had. There's seven items up there. Two of them were full community meetings, one was a phone conference, and then the rest of them were, were face-to-face meetings, so. And just a quick, brief summary of what was covered in each one, so. And that's a redlined copy of the proffers, so that's just there for a reference point. So that concludes the presentation that I had, and I'd be happy to answer any questions or allow one of my colleagues to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Wilmouth. Any questions for, Mr. Stronger?
If you could go back to the view of what you were doing with the, the mining part where the subdivision was?
Tell me when to stop.
Okay. The big picture from the airplane? I think that's the one. There you go.
That one?
You moved that berm back past the tree line, which I like, but are you going to mine this field out here where the berm is actually was?
This field right here?
Yes, sir.
No, sir. That field would stay intact. We actually leased that property to a local farmer who raises hay in that field, and that would stay as it is today.
I guess what I'm thinking about down the road, 15 or 20 years, if there's nothing in writing, could you mine that field like that? You know, there's nothing, there's not going to be a berm there, is, can you still mine that field? And maybe there's nothing even there to mine, I don't know.
That's, that's what I'm, I'm going through in my head right now, from the, from the drilling that we've seen, the deposit that we would mine, actually daylights, it comes up out of the ground in this tree line right here, a little bit outside of that tree line. So initially, I would say, no, we would not mine that area, based on what we've seen from existing drilling.
In the event that it would get mined someday, and I'm not requesting a berm at this time, but if it does get mined, there should be something for a berm or something there for the neighbors, you know what I mean?
Yes, sir. I believe, at least as far as DMME is concerned, if we were to mine that area, we would have to put in a, some form of a screening berm.
Good. Any other questions? Mr. Oats?
Yeah, if that's a spot that you wouldn't mind, any reason not to request that to be downzoned back to RA?
Ty?
I suppose it's, it's something to think about. The purpose of the proffer amendment is to address the berms and to pull them back. The purpose was not to amend anything else of the prior approved rezoning.
The only thing we're thinking about, and I'm sorry, Gary.
No, go ahead.
In case it gets mined down the road, there's no provisions in there for any kind of screening.
I, I get the point. The, there's a couple of things at play. One is the zoning goes to the property line. There are setbacks that are already in your ordinance beyond which you can't, you can't mine, so you, you end up pulling that back. There are requirements of DMME to have certain screening, fencing, berming, things of that sort. Can't proffer those things because those are requirements already under the law. And then we're adding to this, what happens if you go into the future beyond all of our respective times and somebody wants, wants to mine that? I, I couldn't, it would be pure speculation as to what the future rules and regulations would be.
If state rigs, rigs that you have to berm it or have to screen it, I wouldn't even bring it up. And if it does do that, or maybe the setback is enough to protect it, I just don't want to see down the road the people that live there don't have any kind of screening or anything.
No, it's, it's a fair point, and I'll be candid with you, it's, it's nothing that's come up to this point because, again, what was focused on was trying to figure out where the reserves are of what they want to mine, and then can we, to accommodate the neighbors, bring the berms back? And then from there, we actually picked existing tree lines with, with heavy vegetation on them, and they were able to, to say we can install those behind and preserve the view shed. So the immediate plan, and when I say immediate, you recognize, for example, the, the requirements under the old proffers remain, which is this can't be mined at, at least for another 10 years. So immediate is a relative term in the mining business, but the activity that they're proposing and describing with this proffer amendment is going to be behind those berms, behind the tree lines, behind the fence lines. And, and to ask Mr. Wilmouth a question, in theory, could something happen in the future? You're talking decades in the future, and what would the screening requirements be and so on, and we really don't know those things. That's the only hesitation, but I do appreciate the recommendation and the comment.
Mr. Thomas, you have a question?
I have a couple of questions. I'll ask yours first, Ty.
Sure.
To go on to what Mr. Oats and Mr. Ungar were talking about, if you move the berms back, and I like having the berms behind the tree line, but why don't you include, or why didn't you proffer a mining map that shows the perimeters of where you're going to mine? And no mining without a revised proffer could be allowed outside of those, those areas. I can understand why you might not want to downzone the EM back to RA, but there's, there needs to be some kind of a protection. If at some point those berms do get moved behind the tree line, the neighbors still need to have some protection to make sure that 20 years, 30 years from now, and a lot of these people may still be living there, maybe their children would be living there, but we, we don't want to put them in a situation that's untenable for them.
Right. Well, the, and they can explain this in greater detail, but, and we have gone through this before. Where it's going to be mined, they can tell you generally, it's where the reserves are that are underground. They do do core samples and so on, but that only tells you so much.
Understand all that, but there's still, if the berm is moved behind the tree line, the extent of mining has to be inside of the berm.
I would agree.
And, you know, whether that's the good place or not, but that's, that needs to be shown and committed to.
That's a fair point.
The, the other thing, and maybe I'm just not reading this very well, but the staff, I think, is a little confused, too. I can read this, that in the future, you could decide to put a fence up and no berms at all. I don't know if that was your intent, but it's either poorly worded or slickly worded, one or the other. I'm not sure which.
There's always no pride in authorship, but the, the reason for the language in 2.2, as, as Michael pointed out, it ties in to the part that we added later on in the proffer, that we're going to maintain the existing tree line and fence line. And so when it says it'll be a combination of berms and fencing, that's exactly what we're referring to. And we didn't do just one, we did two GDPs that not only showed exactly where the berms were, but what their heights are going to be. I did read the staff comment that somehow there's an asterisk somewhere that says that the berms that are, that are committed to and their heights and so on could somehow turn into fences, but those words are nowhere present on either the GDP or the GDP attachment. In fact, it's just the opposite. We're saying, this is what we're going to build, and these are the heights of them, and we are going to preserve the existing fencing because embedded in that tree line is an old fence line, and we're going to keep that as well.
But we don't want this to get to a bunch of lawyers arguing in court, which has precedence the text of the GDP. So they need to both be the same.
Don't have a problem with that.
You're a lawyer, you know the old adage, that words need to be as specific as mathematics. If you let them loose, that's what you get is.
Again, we, and, and one of the benefits of what we're doing is we're making a record. We have no problem with that.
If I could, let me just interject just for a second. Mr. Lawson, would you be so kind as to read 2.2, the first three lines of that to us so we have some clarity to what we're actually listening to?
The wording we're referring to?
The wording we're referring to.
Is where it says, "A combination of landscaping, earthen berm."
First three lines, if you would, please.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. "A combination of landscaping, earthen berms, or fencing shall be installed around the properties in the areas depicted on the amended GDP. The berms shall have a maximum height of 30 feet, minimum height of 10 feet, as depicted on the GDP attachment." The berm, well, then we, you told me to stop at three.
That's right.
But we go on and talk about section 1 and how high it'll be, section 2, and so on.
Thank you.
Again, that "or" in there between the berms and the fencing can be interpreted different ways by different people.
Again, and we, we read staff report, and to the extent there's any confusion, the GDP and the GDP attachment govern, and we have no problem confirming that if that's your recommendation.
Well, I'd like to see the words cleared up, too, so.
No, I understand.
Yeah. Could I ask, and I forget the gentleman's name.
Mr. Wilmouth.
You stated that the residents, when you had the meetings, the residents agreed to your revised berm heights?
Yes, sir.
And the revised locations.
Yes, sir. They provided the, forgive me. Get there. Yes, sir. At the, at the last community meeting last week, those were provided to us. They actually went to the extent that they asked for a private meeting. So the, myself and the other members of Carmuse, we stepped out of the, the meeting room that we had, and they were able to confer privately. When we stepped back into the room, this is what they presented to us, except for that section 4. As I noted earlier, section 4, there was a bit of concern depending upon which, which neighbor that we spoke to as to whether or not it was 20 feet or 30 feet, which one they would desire. So we put it in there as a, a minimum of 20.
I don't want to beat a dead horse, but section D, they agreed to 15 feet.
Yes, sir.
Section 1 there.
Yes, sir.
What critique do you use for your different berm heights?
What?
View shed? What critique do you use? You go, put 10 foot here, 20 foot here, 30 foot over here. That scares me to the fact that you probably could put all 10 foot in. And I'm not so sure we don't need a standard berm height here of, say, 15 feet, 20 feet, and do the whole thing. Now, why can that not be?
We actually proposed that. We were open to that option. We were open to the option of making the entire berm 15 feet tall. Again, when we spoke to differing neighbors, depending upon whether they were on the west side, the north side, the east side, and even some of the folks that would see from the south side, we got that varying feedback. We got folks that wanted to see 10 feet. We got folks that said, "I don't want a 30-foot berm in my, excuse me, backyard." We got folks that said, "I'd like 15." So that was the reason that we made it the, the varying heights, was just to try and accommodate as many folks as we could.
Ms. Oats?
Yeah, just, I'm clear on that 2.2, where it said, "A combination of landscaping, earthen berms, or fencing." Was the intent that it is "and" fencing, and you're doing all three?
I believe the original proffer had the terminology "and," and we changed it to the "or." To take it one step further than, than Ty had in there, the portions at section 1 will have both an earthen berm and a fence. An example of a location that we may have an "and" or an, an "or" situation would be along the eastern side. We're bounded by the creek on the eastern side, so you would have just the earthen berm. berm there and not have a fence. That would be a situation where we would have an "or."
What about the landscaping? It says landscaping, earth and berms, or fencing.
I assume they're going to.
I would go back to probably, as Ty said, the "as depicted" in the next line, "as is depicted on the GDP," where we actually drew it up there and called it out. I don't believe there's any, any, any area on the GDP where we simply have a row of trees, which would be considered landscaping.
Mr. Unger?
I looked at what you have down there now in some of the old berms, and it appears that, they're not big yet, but it appears you went in there and planted trees on that berm. Is that the intent for the new berms that it would be put in, is to put trees or shrubs or whatever else on them, too?
Yes, sir. There would be a planting scheme. I, I don't remember exactly which section it is in the proffers, but there would be a planting scheme. We've, we've received a grass mix from the, from the Park Service that they're using along Route 11 in a restoration program that they're doing there. So that would be the grass mix that we would likely use, and then any sort of landscaping would have to be approved by the zoning administrator.
Okay.
And the language that we used in that section in the proffers is consistent with the, with the proffers that were approved for our Clearbrook facility.
Thank you.
Just one more question before he leaves the podium. Just in my mind, if we can get things cleared up, I would, if we can do it and get rid of the "or" fence and put something in there that's not so vague, and something that protects the neighbors from Westview, in the event that you would mine in there, you know, that there would be some kind of a provision for berms or something in there for view shed.
Okay. We can take it under consideration, and yeah, point taken.
Okay, well, I guess at the end of the day, I want to know how it's going to be so we'll know how to vote.
Answer that.
Sir, my name's George McCoch from Carmuse Lime and Stone.
Could you wait till you get to the microphone and then tell us there? Thanks, sir.
Hello, yes, my name's George McCoch from Carmuse Lime and Stone. I'm the new guy to the town. I just came back or relocated down here. But anyway, if you may, could you please repeat for me the, the request so I can be exactly clear on what we're asking here?
Two things that are bothering me a little bit. When it talks about berm and fencing, you've got, there's "or" fencing. I'd like to be clarified that it's not going to be a fence instead of a berm. And the other thing is that piece of land, and I appreciate the fact that you're moving the berm on the other side of the tree line, right there at Westview. I think that's very nice, but I assume the reason mainly is because that field probably doesn't have the stone in it that you want. But in the event that you would ever mine that field, there's to be some kind of provision in there for a view shed for the people that live along that area. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, the, 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 the piece of property right behind the, the Western Views homes.
Yes, sir.
The, the piece that would be on the, what I call the out-by-side of the berms that we propose. First of all, let's, let's, let's address the, the fence. I think we can come to an agreement that it, everything will be in or proffered as a berm as depicted. If that's, meets the requirement, we can, we can clean up the language where it says "or."
Okay, that's, that makes me feel better.
And then, secondly, the, the piece of property, which berm is that, Michael, one?
Section one.
Yes. It would be to the north side of section one, is that correct? There's no intent to mine there. So if there's some type of language you would all like to recommend that we, I'm open.
Let me interject here. What we have before us is what we have to address tonight. We can't, you know, we won't be recommending changes to this unless there's not an opportunity. So we, what we have before us is what we either approve or deny tonight, because this, we can't postpone it, we can't rewrite, so what we have before us is what we'll be voting on tonight, to my understanding, unless I get direction otherwise from Mr. Ruddy.
So I think your approach is appropriate. I do also think that obviously we have a public hearing tonight, too, that it'd be good to get the input of the public also.
Okay, thank you. So that's where we stand here tonight, so.
Okay.
Appreciate the comments, but this is what we have to look at tonight. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from our commissioners? This is a public hearing, I'm going to open the public hearing, if anyone would like to comment on this, if you would, please. Keep in mind that we have several people that would like to speak tonight, and state your name and your address, if you would, please.
Hey, thank you. My name's Kevin Barrington.
Okay, we'll try to limit our comments maybe to three minutes or so?
I'm going to try to get it all in there in three minutes.
You have a little time there.
Practiced it, and came in in two minutes and 15 seconds, so.
Okay, Mr. Barrington, thank you.
I'm a resident of Western View. My property directly meets up with Carmuse's property. I unfortunately have been subject to this rezoning effort since its inception back in 2005. I had a little section here about the meeting, why, I was going to bring you guys up to speed what has transpired since this last tabling in November. I spearheaded the effort in our community, getting people's thoughts together and having some meetings just with us, and then having communication with Carmuse in hopes of having some kind of resolution to this. He is right, there's been six, six meetings, two of which have been open forum style. Last one was on February 13th. What you guys need to know is about these berm heights is this. We were strong-armed that night by a gentleman that's not even here right now. His name's Ian Kakaria or whatever. That gentleman basically forced us, right there, forced the rest of us to make a vote on what we wanted to see. And he used the tactic by, everybody saw the 30-foot berms are behind the tree. So as a resident, who would not want the taller berms if we're not going to see them in the first place? So when we pushed them on the 30-foot berms, they said, oh, but that comes at a cost. That means that tree line they speak of right there, they said that we would lose half that width of it. So then that's why the berm height started to come down, because people started fearing, well, that's a nice buffer, we want to keep that buffer. But then that gentleman kept saying, no, you, if you wanted 30, because of the three-to-one build-out, that you're going to lose half that, half that forest right there. So I just wanted you guys to know, that's where the 15 came in. I think if it, if it was said that we would all bear, probably be willing that we want the 30-foot berms, because we wouldn't be seeing them anyway, according to their depiction. So I just want to clear that up. And while there has been some minor headway, there's still a lot of work that needs to be done in order for this new proffer amendment to be acceptable. There were some requests that were asked for but never showed up in the final draft, and you guys have a copy of those. Those are simple things that's going to protect us. And so, as you well know, this has been a highly contested issue since its passing in 2006. The final proffers, frankly, were not acceptable then, nor are the new ones that are before you acceptable. Carmuse has opened the door for changes to help their cause. We would like to see those items that's on that list be included to protect our safety, our interest, and our, our quality of life. If there's to be a resolution in this matter, it will be necessary for them to compromise. We shouldn't have to compromise anymore. They're encroaching upon us, and we're the ones in, in the long run that are losing. They're making money on the deal, we're losing money on our property values. So it is, it's time that the county representatives do what's best for its citizens. We've been placed into a no-win situation 12 years ago, and I previously stated, we need our, our safety, interest, and our, our quality of life protected. Making sure that a clear, understandable, and reasonable set of proffers are approved is the first step in that process, and sadly, we aren't there yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good timing, thank you. So anyone else would like to come before us? Yes, sir. State your name and your address, please.
I'm Richard Dye from Oakton, Virginia. I own 65 acres adjacent to this property on the southeast side.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I share a boundary with them of about 4,000 feet, 1,000 feet through the middle of, middle Marsh Brook. That's our shared property line. One thing I'd like to clarify, berm in section two, which I think someone earlier stated would be 30 feet, it says to top of page three of the amendment, it'll be 30 feet unless it encroaches on the stream, then it'll be something less. So it's at their discretion, this language as to how high they build it. I urge that it remain at 30 feet. They can start at the brook and then work backwards to get there 30 feet. When this decision was taken, you know, well, before it was taken, I intended to build my retirement home there, sell lots to other people, get money to build my home, but this has had a devastating impact on, on the value. And if you reduce the protections provided in the original proffers, it will further adversely impact our property values. So I, I urge you to maintain the old requirements, 30-foot berm, please.
Thank you, sir. So anyone else would like to come before us? Yes, state your name.
I'm John Oynes. I live at 374 Chimney Circle, Middletown.
Thank you.
There's a couple of things that have bothered me tonight, is when they refer to the community meetings. I've lived in Middletown most all my life, 73 years. I consider the community of Middletown, not just the town, but all the area around it. This community they're talking about seems like it's just Western View. It is also Chimney Hills, all the neighbors around. You are not taking into consideration those people. I hear you had a meeting at the church. I was not invited. I did not know about it. No one else knew about it. It was like a private meeting. Was it publicly announced? Was it in the paper?
Sir, 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 just address us, please, thank you.
No one knows. No one knew about this meeting. If I'd have known about it, I'd have been there to talk and give my concerns. The elimination of berms, the dropping them on the heights level, what really bothers me is the Chapel Road. You got berms of 15 feet, 10 feet on either side of Chapel Road, that is not high enough. We have a, a national park now, there are lots and lots of people traveling that road. 15 feet is not enough to hide what's behind there. It is not a, a safety matter, too. It should be a lot higher. When I was young, I roamed those fields all the time, or the kids do them today. They're going to be out roaming, too. Those berms need to be higher. The other thing that bothered me is they do not have to start the berms until, really, once they start the mining. That's not enough time to give those trees time to grow. You know those berms are not going to be solid topsoil. It's going to be the garbage. Who's going to monitor the growth? They said they're reasonable. They're going to use native grasses. Grass is not going to hide anything behind. Trees will. There is no pattern for how these trees are to be planted randomly. What does that mean? Every 20 feet? Every five feet? They need to come up with something that's going to hide that. The other thing that bothers me, and it's going to bother all of them in the area, Middletown too, is the amount of trucks that are allowed to come from the quarry. 65, they said, on the, or 86 on average, but it can go up to 200 loads a day.
Certainly.
They will not let, they will not let trucks use chapel? It hadn't stopped yet. Almost every day, you can see a truck coming down Chapel, coming a shortcut through.
We appreciate your comment. We're going to have to watch the time if you start wrapping up.
So, please do not allow them to change. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. So anyone else would like to come before us and speak? Yes?
Hello, my name's Keon Banks, and I live at 216 Marsh Brook Lane. I'm not quite on Western View, but close to it. First of all, I wanted to say thank you for giving us the 90 days to meet with Carmuse and try and come up with some solutions. I consider myself an optimist, and, and I, I think the community went in there with the highest expectation that we could bang our heads together and, and come up with something beautiful. What happened was Carmuse enticed the new proffers with the, the shrinkage of the, of the area they're going to mine. A lot of people like the idea of shrinking the actual mining area, and so we got excited with the idea. We can, we can work with that. We can, we can make negotiations here and there. And we tried to make some great negotiations, and, and I do believe they, they took a few steps as well. And I think it's important to, to note that that 90 days was not fruitful. There was communication there. Unfortunately, that communication didn't make it into the proffers in the right terms and terminologies. And it's for that reason that I request that, and I, I do believe I sent pretty much everyone a blanket email, I, I request that you deny the, the application as it's written. It would be welcomed to negotiate further, and if we, if, if there was more time, I think we could have come up with some agreeable language and terms and heights. And don't want to waste any more time. I, I also thank you guys for noting some of the loopholes or, or wording that, that is kind of vague, and I realize that you guys are our first and last line of defense as far as the community goes. Otherwise, it ends up with lawyers getting paid big money to argue what words mean and what the intent was. And that might not be this year or next year, but 10 years or 20 years down the road, lawyers will get paid big money to figure out what exactly was meant by the wording of these proffers. So I think it's important to do it right, not necessarily to do it timely, but to do it right. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Robin Young. I live at 520 Chimney Circle in Middletown. I want to basically endorse what the fellow who spoke before me had to say. We are kind of in a catch-22. The negotiating was a combination of sincerity and bluster, but we did accomplish something. I think if we can keep on negotiating between now and the board of supervisors meeting, we might have a better product. I really have more of a query to you and perhaps the attorney. I understand you can't table this at this point. If you deny it, do we still have working time to prevent, to present a revised proposal to the board when it goes forward?
That'll be a question while I staff, if you finish your comments, we'll, they'll address those.
Fine, that's the end of my comment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bill Hunter. I live at 151 Western View Drive. Having been kind of one of the ringleaders, if you will, of this whole thing, first want to apologize to that gentleman. The list that we used for explanation purposes came from a list of 85 houses that were within 1,500 feet, which is a qualification that every woman sent the letter to, and they offered the services of the foundation and the well monitoring. So apologize to him, I don't know how he'd snuck through, but for some reason, his name did not make our list. So all I can do at this point is apologize. The meetings that we had on a local level were far more productive than the last one we had, which, as Mr. Barrington said, there was an arm twisting and, I call it an arm twisting, but it seemed to me that there was a definite lack of compromise, which is what we hoped for. My initial quest was, let's take a look at section one, was for 20 feet on that side. Because of the height of the trees and the pictures that they showed us at one of their earlier presentations, it looked great. Putting it behind the trees is fantastic. When we asked for the 20-foot, they said, well, it may encroach on the trees a little bit if we go to 20. This was at our last meeting. We asked, well, why is that? Well, because we're not going to go up on the, either side, we're going to go up on the outside, which is what affects us. We were concerned about two things, wound up being a catch-22. Number one was that line of trees that we wanted to save. I request that we clear up the wording on that, and that seems to be a, from Mr. Unger on down, it seems to be a general theme, that we clear up some of the wording, that it still reads the fence line. Now, there is a fence line inside those trees. What we're concerned about is leave the trees to hide the, which now a 15-foot berm, because if we, if we pushed for 20, like was agreed to at one of our local meetings, when it went up to the next level, it became 15. That was a bit of a lack of compromise. And that's happened in several other of the issues, that I believe you all were sent the nine or 11 points in an email. So that, that, in general, a lack of compromise So that, that, in general, a lack of compromise at the last meeting is, is what I saw. Everything's okay, but we're not gonna lose any more money. By going up with the berm, the regional manager of Carmuse said basically, it, it really doesn't cost that much more. So if we are cutting into their costs, they've saved a considerable amount of money. My thinking, by reducing the footprint of that berm, okay? If I traced it out with some engineering tools that my father had, it was about a quarter of the size of what the thirty-foot berm was gonna be that they initially had. Again, we asked for twenty.
If I could, your, your time is up. If you start wrapping up, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, I apologize for that. The clock says fifteen, but, okay. In, in general, I was a little disappointed, and I think with, I think with more, more negotiating, we can get something set down. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else would like to speak before us? If not, I'll close the public hearing. And I appreciate everyone's comments. The applicant would like to respond at this time to any of the issues or any of the comments that were made before you?
We very much appreciate the comments, appreciate the meetings, and, and your comments as well. And unless you all have any questions, we look forward to your recommendation.
Does anyone have questions of the applicant? Mr. Thomas?
Ty, the, the planning commission's realm of actions for this tonight are, are limited to a vote for recommend approval or recommending disapproval. However, the applicant can request a delay that would then produce, hopefully, a better product. I am extremely disappointed in what you guys produced and put in front of us tonight. And I, I'm sure it was not an intent, but it is filled with holes. It has a lot of caveats. It can be read multiple ways. And if I had a vote on this tonight, I would recommend denial. I like some aspects of this. Moving the berm behind the trees, I think's great, but reducing the height, I'm not so sure on. And saying that if you increase the height, you gotta take the trees out. No, you just move the berm further back on your property. I mean, adding ten feet onto that berm is not gonna cost you that much mineable land inside those trees. The berm is not just for viewshed protection. The berm provides sound attenuation. It provides particulate matter attenuation. By reducing that berm, the people that live up there are gonna get a whole lot more noise. They're gonna get more dust. They're gonna get more overpressure waves coming into their houses. I, I really, you know, I like the berm behind the trees, but I think it should be twenty-five or thirty feet. There's no reason to reduce the height of that berm. You know, people are talking about it as reducing the height because of the viewshed requirements. That's, that's only one of the items, and that's the least important of the items as far as I'm concerned. So if I was, again, if we have to vote on this tonight, I will recommend denial. I think it's a, it could be a good product, but it's not now. It's too many loopholes, too many ways it can be interpreted. It, it's just not there. This is not what we expect coming in from you, Ty. You know, it's just, you know what we want and what, what it takes for us to vote on, and this isn't it. So I'll, be quiet.
No, that's fine. And, and as always, I greatly appreciate your comments. And the, the mission when this was last table was, was to meet with the neighbors and get input from the neighbors, and we did. The one positive you can take away is that the, the reduced footprint, pulling the berms back, everyone agrees. That's a good thing. The preservation of the existing tree line, fence line, good thing, because, especially because of the height of the mature trees. Where we run a little indifferent directions is when we started talking about the heights. And you all have heard a little bit of differing opinions from, from different folks, and we, we've had meetings, not only one-on-ones, twos-on-twos, but en masse, we get conflicting numbers. In fact, on number four, when we left the room and they met and they voted and they came back and said, here are the heights, and we wrote them down, we, we had a, a very nice lady come up at the end and say, that's not for me. I, I don't want that. And we've actually gotten correspondence. So you, you heard Mr. Wellmuth delicately say, we've done a minimum of twenty. We can do thirty, that's fine. But you need to know, different folks looking from that side have different opinions, and it's very, very difficult when you've got that to, to pick your height, if you will.
I totally agree with you, Ty, but the people that are giving you those comments are giving you those comments based on what they wanna see or not see for a viewshed. When you reduce the height, and all of a sudden, the how, the sound level of the glass go up thirty or forty decibels in their house, I guarantee you, they're not gonna be happy. When there's dirt all over their cars every morning when they go out, they're not gonna be happy. But they're not thinking about that. They're giving you comments based on what they're gonna see. And again, I say that's the least important part. Your role and Carmuse's role in this is to explain to the homeowners what the impact is of reducing the height of that berm, and it's not just the viewshed.
What, what we have now under the existing proffers run from ten to thirty. What we presented not only at the last rezoning, and I'm going back a decade ago, and also at Clearbrook, when we presented sound engineers who actually gave testimony, it's their job and it's what they do, is that you actually get a benefit going from zero to ten feet. There is no appreciable benefit either from sound or dust or any of the other impacts that you're talking about beyond the ten feet. And there's actually a little bit of logic to this. That's from the start. When we start to mine, we go down. And of course, if you will, the berm gets higher because we go lower. But those sound engineers have testified before this body and before the Board of Supervisors for both locations. They've actually taken sound measurements of actual equipment and so on, and, and what they have testified to is counter to what you just, just represented. And then, in fact, you get that benefit and that maximum benefit from ten. Beyond that, you don't get an appreciable benefit. The existing trees are tremendous in terms of dust and actually sound and so on, and it is a nice mix of, of all kinds of trees. So you can go out there today and see what you don't see. It's a very effective screen, and, and that will remain. And we did add language to accommodate our neighbors, but as we go forward, and we're happy to commit to continue to meet with our neighbors and, and talk with them, but I'm afraid the result of that is you get different heights depending upon who you're talking with, when. But I, I'd like to go away with the positives, which is we're pulling them back. You're not gonna have a thirty-foot berm a hundred feet off your property line, which I think would have been quite, quite intrusive and overbearing and, and quite a sight to behold. So that's a positive. We have worked with the neighbors, will continue to work with the neighbors on the heights, but again, don't listen to me, listen to the sound experts. I think you get that maximum benefit out of, out of the ten-foot.
And that's, that's as long as you're talking about flat land. You have a topo that goes up, the sound will go up with it. And it's, it's not, it's not always a linear ten feet. It depends, it depends on the topo and your specific site, but, you know.
I'll have to defer to the experts. The only thing that makes sense to me is not only, I listened to what they heard, I processed it, but as you mine, you go down. And so that height, if you will, gets higher and higher because our, our activities are lower and lower, and that
Agree with you on that.
Very much attenuates it and so on. But I would recommend, and we did attach, I know you all received quite a packet with all the various proffers, and it's sometimes confusing, but we did add language, we did amend to, we listened to you all, and we did tighten up by putting in view sheds, by putting in the, the added description of what landscaping will be there. We actually put in the seed mix, which was recommended by the National Park Service. There is still the restriction that everything has to be approved by the zoning administrator in consultation with a forester. We left that. So I, again, I think the key is the visual, and what I would suggest, regardless of the heights, is putting it behind the existing tree line and fence line is significant because it's what you won't see, and the pictures don't lie. It's all behind that, and, and the one positive takeaway is, we are hearing, thank you, we agree with that, that's a good move. And then the last piece, and it wasn't talked about very much, is that the activity is now put off well into the future because we heard that from our neighbors. Can you just leave it alone? And so the start date remains as it was in the no earlier than date. So it's ten years from now. That hasn't changed. And then we're not gonna be building berms ten years in advance. We're not gonna be disturbing the soil ten years in advance. And in response to our neighbors' questions, what that means is what we see remains for at least ten years or ten years beyond. The answer is yes. Again, very positive reception from our neighbors. I think it makes sense. But thank you.
If I could jump in here real quick, Mr. Lawson. There was a question in there, and I haven't heard the answer just yet, but I'm sure you'll, when, Mr. Thomas may wanna reiterate that question again, but.
Again, Carmuse has the option of requesting a delay and preventing a, a vote tonight, and we have to vote on what is in front of us, whether it's confusing, misleading, or whatever. We have to vote on what's in front of us.
I understand, and I appreciate that. And, and of course, we've, we've had a little bit of a, of an opportunity for a delay in, in many meetings as a result of that. We, we cannot delay this, and the biggest problem, unfortunately, are the existing proffers, which say you have to install these berms and, and do that ten years before you can start. And unfortunately, and that's what prompted this, this proffer amendment, that ten years is now. And that's why we would like to get this, this heard if we could, and, and we greatly appreciate your comments, and I don't mean to be dismissive of them in any way, we're not. And we'll be happy to continue to work with the neighbors, and we appreciate their offer to do that as well. So what the Board of Supervisors does, I know they'll receive your comments, and, and we'll commit to, to continue through that process, but the, the problem is the clock that exists in the existing proffers. And the longer we delay, it, it puts us in a place where we just gotta start under the existing plan, which I hate to beat a dead horse. If there's anything everybody agrees with, don't put those berms a hundred feet off my property line, and we are changing that.
Thanks, sir. That, that was the answer we were looking
For proposing to change that. I apologize.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lawson. Is there any other questions that we have? Mr. Triplet?
I'm fine.
Okay. Mr. Unger?
Just one thing about the berm, and I don't mean just to emphasize on Westview, but I'm inclined to agree with Carmuse on that somewhat. They're moving that berm back on the other side of the trees. In my opinion, I went out there and looked at it. If I lived there, I'd ten times rather have it behind the trees. If the berm is fifteen feet, you're not gonna see the top of it because of the trees. I would rather look across those trees and see the mountains if I lived there than I would see the top of a thirty-foot berm. And I understand where Carmuse is coming from. Because they wanna mine up to a certain area, when you get a three-to-one slope, you know, you gotta move the berm one way or the other to, to get that. And if they're gonna mine up close to that, I understand why they're
I don't know.
Gonna disturb some trees, so I don't see a thirty-foot berm there myself. What I don't understand is some of the other property, what size is the berm gonna be? I'm getting confused now that I'm listening to this. Is it gonna be twenty, fifteen? I don't, I don't know what it is now.
All right. Set. Is that it?
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Rhodes?
Yeah, I'd reiterate a lot of what Mr. Thomas said. I agree with it, and kinda also agree with Greg that there are some positive aspects of this. We can do the vote tonight. However, the Board of Supervisors does have the option, if you change your proffers between now and then, they can kick it back for another recommendation based on revised proffers. So getting our vote tonight, moving ahead to board, might, might not gain you anything. So just wanna make sure you understand that. The way the proffers are written right now, as Greg pointed out earlier, there is nothing stopping them from going, coming back into that field behind the houses. I know they're saying there's nothing there they wanna mine. County regs say they have to be a hundred feet off the property line. They have to have a berm per their mining permit, so that means the berm can be fifty feet behind your house instead of a hundred, and they can dig right up to within a hundred feet. There's nothing that proper, proffers present, preventing that right now. So I have an issue with that.
Yeah, as written.
To me, it's an easy vote. I really think there should have been more communication with the neighbors before you even started down this road. If you could have had the neighborhood signing on to it, you could have got what you want, but, I mean, you waited really to talk to the whole community until after you started this, and now you're trying to play catch-up to, to get them on your side, and I think it's too late.
Thank you. Since we're into the discussion portion, do you want any other further discussion or comments? Staff?
Do. What is the berm gonna be? Is it consistent all the way around fifteen, twenty?
No, no, it varies.
And the way it's written, it can be a fence.
Well, I think that's been hopefully clarified.
Not on what we're voting on.
Not on what, remember, we got, what we got before us tonight is what we vote on tonight. Staff, like any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Since there's no further discussion, and there's no more comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Johnny?
Mr. Chairman, with all the lackadaisical things that's in this, these proffers amendments, I just can't accept what we're looking at here and satisfy myself. I'd like to make a motion that we turn down the rezoning, amended proffers for rezoning of oh-five dash seventeen.
Second.
I'd a motion to deny and have a second.
Before we do that vote, I'll just make one comment. Before you do do your vote, I ask you that before we do vote on this motion, to make sure that we take note of what all has been said and what's happened because it does affect the community and our business leaders. So did we improve from the ninety days ago in the proffers? Keep in mind staff's comments and any other implications your vote has on this recommendation being sent to the Board of Supervisors and why we're reviewing these proffers and the reduction tonight. That said, that's my two cents, and it's time to vote. And I'll go Mr. Unger first.
Unger, no, um, yes for the vote?
Marston, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Daniel, yes.
Klein, yes.
Rhodes, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Bowden, yes.
Wellmott, yes.
Sure, but yes.
Dawson, yes.
Chair votes yes. The motion, the, is denied, and it'll go to the Board of Supervisors with a denial on the March fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting. Thank you. Thank you for all the people that spoke also. Our next item on our agenda tonight is another, is a public hearing for conditional use permit zero-nine-dash-one-seven for Gregory A. Bishop, Shenandoah Mobile LLC Commercial Telecommunications Facility, submitted to construct a wireless commercial telecommunications monopole tower with supporting equipment in a fenced compound. The property is located at two-nineteen Round Hill Road, Winchester, Virginia, and is identified with property identification number fifty-two-dash-A-dash-two-fifty-four in the Back Creek, Mesquite District. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the planning commission, the adjoining properties with this proposed conditional use permit be located are zone RA, rural areas, and B-three industrial transition. Uses are a residential, a utility substation, golf course, and a V-DOP maintenance facility. If I can turn your attention to the map located on your left on the screen, the property is highlighted in black, the little, I'm gonna say little, but the yellow dot is a general area where this telecommunications facility will be located. This is a proposed one-hundred-and-thirty-eight-foot monopole-type commercial telecommunications facility to be located on a seven-acre property. Zoning ordinance allows for telecommunications facilities in our rural areas, zoning districts when approved conditional use permit. This property is currently located at the urban, located outside the urban development area in the sewer water service area, but is also included in a round hill land use plan, which calls for that part of the county to be commercial and residential in, in nature. This is the, the applicant's outline of what they're gonna This is the applicant's outline of what they're going to have for the telecommunications facility, just as we normally do here, just to kind of show you what the tower's going to look like, egress, ingress. Obviously, there will be a site plan as part of the conditions here. This is just a layout of the property. This proposed conditional use permit is also going to require a setback waiver. The applicant is requesting a waiver to reduce the required setbacks for eastern or western property lines. This proposed tower will be 135 feet from the eastern or western property lines. The height in the RA zoning district is 35 feet, the tower is going to be 138 feet, and the RA setbacks are 100 feet. The setback waiver is per ordinance is 100-foot setback per every one foot of maximum height. 138, obviously minus 35 is where you're at 103. The calculation you say with the request would end up, at the end of the day, should you approve this part of waiver, which is part of the conditional use permit, would be a waiver of 69 feet from the property line. Should the Planning Commission find this used to be approved, staff will recommend the following conditions to be assigned to this conditional use permit. Number one, all review agency comments should be complied with at all times. Number two, tower should be available for co-locating or personal wireless service providers. Number three, a minor site plan shall be approved by Frederick County. Number four, the tower should be removed by the applicant and/or property owner within 12 months of abandonment of operation. Number five, in event the telecommunication tower is not erected within 12 months of the approval of this conditional use permit, the conditional use permit will be deemed invalid. And number six, any expansion or modification is used will require a new conditional use permit. For the record, Mr. Lynn Kerner is representing the applicant on this proposed telecommunications facility, and I'll be here to answer any questions that you or any of the planning commissioners may have on this conditional use permit, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any questions for Mr. Chairman? Seeing none, the applicant? State your name, please, sir.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Kerner. I am representing Shantel. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, and many of you I remember from being before you previously. As Mr. Chairman shared with you, our proposal this evening is for a site on the Bishop property. Little bit of history, currently, we have a telecommunications site located on the top of one of the power poles that's in the VDOT right-of-way, right at the intersection of Highway 37 and Route 50. Because of the nature of the type of pole that is, being a power line, our antennas are mounted above the power line. And any, this, we've had that site for probably 12 years. With the evolving of the wireless industry, in November of 2012, they were working on upgrading the site. And to upgrade it means to upgrade the antennas and add what we now call remote radio heads. Those could not be added strictly because that existing pole wouldn't structurally pass to add additional load to it. Sometime, I believe, probably in 2013, the upgrades that they could do were done, which put the radio heads on the ground and a different antenna. So now we've evolved into more of a advancement with the technology, and so there is a need to add additional services to this area. Some of our surrounding areas that I could touch on are, if you travel out Route 50, Round Hill Methodist Church, behind that church, there is a monopole structure. Shantel is located on that. To the north, up on Indian Hills Trail, Indian Trail, up off of 522 by the market, back in there, there is a tower. Shantel is on that one. Then as you travel into town, in behind the National Fruit is another tower that Shantel is on, on various buildings, the George Washington Hotel, the Taylor Hotel downtown, the rehab hospital on Cork Street, and then a site that we recently built at the Valley Protein property on Jubal Early. So we've pretty much got this whole area surrounded. Then with the inability to upgrade this tower to the service that we needed out there, they issued me a search ring, which was probably in the middle of November or so of 2015. I started my search of the area and discovered that Verizon was working that same, the same area. Verizon at that time had made contact with the property owner of the Candyland campground and was working with them, negotiating with him as far as putting a tower, and we were going to support their application. Well, eventually, things went on, and those negotiations fell through. In the meantime, I was still searching the area, trying to find a place that we could place a facility. And, you know, one thought came to my mind was, oh, well, we're in VDOTs right of way now, we'll just go the other side of the road in that big white area and build a big monopole right in that off-ramp. That didn't set well with me personally, because just the view of it and just the location was not a good entrance into the city of Winchester and that whole hospital area. So I kept moving outward. I looked at the properties that are behind the Marriott Hotel, which is hospital property, also looked at the rooftop of the hospital and tried to negotiate with those folks, and there was no interest. Also, the orchard in there behind the Walmart, the vacant property that is for future development next to the Walmart to the west. Spoke with folks out at the village at Orchard Ridge, trying to see if way on the eastern side of their property, if we could possibly put a site in there. Now, mind you, that my search area, which we expand a little bit, but is a half-mile radius. So moving out much farther, I looked at the property by the fire station and had that evaluated. But because of the distance it is from that particular intersection and the close proximity to the site out at Round Hill Methodist Church, that was not a feasible location. So my next step was to check on the property that is just to the west of the VDOT. There's a little bitty parcel that Mr. Bishop owns that butts up right against, right up against the VDOT property, but because of the Abrams Creek in there and the wetlands and so on and so forth, that was not feasible. Moving farther out into his property was not feasible there again because it was too far away. I approached VDOT and was working with VDOT to put a proposed site at the very end of their fenced yard area. They don't, they own property past that fenced area. It's out a little farther, so we were going to put it back in there, but we ran into issues there again because we were a little bit farther out, and we would have to go a little taller. And due to the additional heights, we would run into issues with the potential impact on a historic property, which has been reviewed by the historical review folks. And so we moved over to and settled on this Bishop property. It's a very, as you can see, it was a very odd-shaped parcel, and to get back into that parcel, where we're proposing to put the tower is higher elevation, down more along railroad tracks, part of that is in the floodplain, and so we wanted to stay out of there. But as far as fitting it in, we felt that this was the best location that we could fit it in there. From the center of the pole to the property line is 134 foot. Because of the calculations and so on and so forth, we need a waiver of a heights requirement. If the pole would fall over, just like a tree that you chopped off, it wouldn't get out of the property. But we had a structural engineer review, and we have a theoretical all-zone radius that they have built into the tower to give us that it would fall within 69 feet, because they're designed to collapse upon themselves. This tower would be made available for additional carriers. And like I said, Verizon had worked the area, I did contact them, and right now, they don't have funding for that particular site. And also, AT&amp;T is located on the other power pole at the intersection of Route 50 and Route 32, or 50 and 37. And so, not sure what their plans are, they have not let us know. But we feel that this tower, yes, it may provide a little bit of a impact on a couple of the closer properties. It is situated right along where there are existing 120-foot or so, 118 to 125-foot transmission towers coming into the subdivision, and it would be a blend to the area. I do have RF engineer with us, Chris Sarr, if there's any specific RF questions. But this site would be very helpful for us as far as all our surrounding sites have been upgraded to the new technology. If we can upgrade this one, it will increase our capacity in this area three to four times, which is very helpful for all the surrounding folks at the, use of the facilities at the hospital, the sale barn, shopping at Walmart, and the restaurants, and traveling those highways. Any questions?
We have any questions for Mr. Kerr?
Just one before we get to...
Unger?
What district is this in?
Yours, Back Creek. It says Back Creek.
It is Back Creek?
I questioned that too, but it does have Back Creek on the motion. It must be a...
When they did the last change for the census, the line did change. It used to be Gainesboro District. Last time we brought stuff, it was Gainesboro. The line used to be Route 50. That has changed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So it is Back Creek?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thanks, sir. This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone would like to come forward to speak on this issue, come forward to the microphone? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. My name is Dan Turnpaw. I am vice president of Site Management for Diamond Communications. Excuse me. Diamond Communications handles the wireless communication attachments for First Energy on their transmission towers, including five here in Frederick County and the one that Shantel was talking about tonight. Just want to clear one thing up. We've been working on an adjacent site, it's within a couple hundred yards, for over a year with AT&amp;T, to upgrade that site to allow for basically putting the radios on top of the tower for AT&amp;T, and also to turn that into a multi-carrier facility. And we just, within the last six weeks or so, or eight weeks, received approval from First Energy to go forward with that project, along with a second project on a different site here in Frederick County. We've just communicated that to Shantel, excuse me, within the last 10 days. So these folks here may not even know that, but it was Jessica Wilmer with Shantel that we communicated that to just recently. And I did tell Chris before the meeting tonight. So just wanted to clear that up. They will be able to upgrade that site, that existing site, within the next 12 months or so.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Does staff have any comments? The applicant? Okay. Any questions from our commission members? Any comments? Seeing nothing? I'll entertain a motion.
If everybody's okay with it, I'd like to recommend approval of CUP number 9-17, Greg Bishop, Shandau Mobile, with the exception of adding the last one in, the 69-foot on the setback. 34 feet in case proper number. Just add that in as another proffer.
Point of clarification, do we need two different motions? One for the waiver, one for the CUP?
Waiver.
Yeah, I believe we do.
Okay.
So should I do, let's follow through with the motion. So you're going to make a motion for the waiver first? Is that what you're doing, Mr. Unger?
I can, yes. We'll do the waiver first.
That'd be proffer? Okay. Thank you if you would, please.
Yes, sir. I'd like to recommend a motion for the waiver of the tower for Greg Bishop, Shandau Mobile.
Thank you. A second? Second, Mr. Marston? Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Dawson, we'll start with you.
Dawson, aye.
Dawson, yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Trippit, yes.
Wilmot, what, yes?
Bowden, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Rhodes, yes.
Klein, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Marston, yes.
Unger, yes.
The chair votes yes. Motion to for waiver is approved. I'll go, also, I'll entertain a motion for the conditional use permit.
Well, I'd like to recommend approval of conditional use permit 09-17, Greg A. Bishop, Shandau Mobile, for the installation of the communication tower.
Have a motion? Any discussion? Not, well then, we'll vote on the motion for approval. Mr. Unger?
Unger, yes.
Marston, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Klein, yes.
Rhodes, yes.
Thomas, yes. Bowden, yes.
Wilmot, yes.
Trippit, yes.
Dawson, yes.
The chair votes yes. The motion for approval for conditional permit, use permit 09-17, that will go forward to the Board of Supervisors for their March 14, 2018 meeting. We're down to the last part of our agenda, and if we have no other, then I'll seek a motion. If there's no other comments, we're adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
Have a second, all those in favor? Thank you. We are adjourned.
Oh, how about the next meeting, Kevin?
Yes. Do we have, yeah, we'll have a meeting on the first Wednesday. Thanks, sir.